The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah.
It's good to see everyone tonight. I made it what you call the role.
Trusty Guyer?
Here.
Trusty Spurley?
Yes.
Trusty Bowman?
Here.
Trusty Youngerman?
Here.
Trusty Mearsack?
Here.
Trusty Brusaska?
Here.
We'll go into public participation. The first one tonight is the introduction of the new executive director of CASA Kendall County, Heidi Baird. Welcome.
Thank you all so much.
Just hit the...
Ha ha, there we go, okay. Thank you all so much, I really appreciate it. My name is Heidi Baird and I am the new executive director for CASA Kendall County. So obviously, part of your town is within our county. And we currently serve 131 children and that covers children that are affected by foster care as well as truancy. So versus the Kane County CASA, they do not hold any truancy cases, but we do. So our role is to advocate for children who have been affected by foster care and/or truancy at the court level. So we are there with them every step of the way. We have one CASA that is assigned to that person and they are with them from the beginning of the case to the end. Here in Illinois, we have 19,737 kids that are currently in foster care. And that was as of February 29th of 2024. So it's a huge issue that we see. It happens in our own counties. Abuse, neglect, truancy. It touches everybody from all different walks of life and socioeconomic backgrounds. So what we do, like I said, is advocate for the kids, but we also work with the birth parents, the foster parents, a relative caregiver, whoever that might be, and make sure their needs are getting met as well as provide resources to them. Today I have alongside of me Lori Patch, who is also a resident of Montgomery, but she has been with our program for 13 years and has supported the children, advocated for them, cried alongside of them, and cheered them on. So I'm really glad to be able to work alongside people who have such a high level of dedication to our most vulnerable children. So again, thank you so much. If you have any questions about CASA, I'd be more than happy to answer any of them or meet with you on an individual basis to go over anything in more detail. Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Both of you, I appreciate the work that you do for the kids in our county and also bringing awareness to this broader beyond the county lines. Because I know that none of these issues are defined by any specific county or community. It really affects all of us, so thank you.
I'm gonna leave some, I'll leave some stuff up here, so if anybody has more questions, we do have some takeaways for you. Thank you again.
Thanks Heidi, appreciate it. All right, we'll move into the next item for public participation is the Volunteer of the Year recognitions. Rosie?
Hello, everyone. Will we have our volunteer honorees please come down to the front? "It takes a village" is more than just a saying, and no community is complete without volunteers. It does not matter how great or how small the impact, you've made a difference in our community. While I know that you choose to volunteer selflessly and without expectation of being recognized or rewarded, today I wish to do just that. I want to let you know just how much your dedication is appreciated and to make sure that everyone in the Montgomery community is forever grateful to each and every one of you. Whether you volunteer on a recurring basis or volunteer for specific days, regardless of how many hours you choose to give, it's important for you to know that what you do makes a difference. Words cannot adequately express the gratitude that I, the board, and the community wish to convey. Please know that your volunteer home is recognized, appreciated, valued, and cherished. We thank you and we look forward to working with you in the future. Tonight, our first award shows that everyone needs a boost sometimes. These volunteers take great pride in boosting up the band and making sure they have everything they need and then some. Hundreds of hours are put forth setting up fundraisers and working with other volunteers to enable this high school band to shine and reach new heights. I'm pleased to announce to everyone tonight, the 2024 Youth Impact Volunteers of the Year, Steve and Marge Christ. The Active Adult Impact Award goes to an individual who always puts others before herself, ensures everyone gets fed, and is always the first to show up to help and the last one to help clean up. Integral to the establishment and longevity of the Senior Lunch Program, this volunteer is always one of the first smiles you see upon walking into the room. I'm pleased to announce the 2024 Active Adult Impact Volunteer of the Year, Patty Boulay. There are many ways the Montgomery community supports families who might need a little extra help. The Community Impact Award goes to a volunteer who helps ensure the food pantry is stocked, making multiple trips to the store to buy food donations, and coming to Village Hall to stock the pantry each time, each month. I'm pleased to announce the 2024 Community Impact Volunteer of the Year, Stacy Kurtia, who is not here today, but Ms. Mara Johnson will be accepting the award on Stacy's behalf tonight. The nonprofit organization Impact Award is full of stars, especially these three volunteer superstars. These individuals make it a point to be inclusive, creating safe, encouraging environments for learners of all kinds to dance to their own beat. I'm pleased to announce the 2024 Nonprofit Organization Impact Volunteers of the Year, Stephanie Clay, Tanya Pope, and Kayla Lindlow of the Special Stars, Inc. Thank you to all of our community volunteers and congratulations to our 2024 Volunteer of the Year honorees. It takes a village and we are so grateful that you are part of ours. Congratulations to everyone.
I was gonna say something, but literally, you can't say anything. Thank you for coming. All right, thank you for coming, I appreciate it. We trained them well, they knew where to go right away. All right, the first item, or the next item is C, which is the public comment period. Is there any member of the public that wishes to address the board tonight that's not on the agenda? All right. Hearing none, we'll move into the consent. I'll read the items and entertain a motion for approval. We have minutes of the May 28 Village Board meeting, accounts payable through June 10th, the accounts receivable report from May of '24, the water production report from May of '24, community development monthly report from May of '24, and a request for waiver of carnival permit fee for Windy City Amusements. So moved?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion?
No.
Go ahead.
Trusty Mearsack?
Yes.
Trusty Brusaska?
Yes.
Trusty Guyer?
Yes.
Trusty Spurley?
Yes.
Trusty Bowman?
Yes.
Trusty Youngerman?
Yes.
Sure, thank you. All right, item A for separate action tonight is Resolution 2024-020, authorizing the release of the performance security for Tropical Smoothie Cafe.
Thank you. Tropical Smoothie has completed the punchless items as well as landscaping, so it was being recommended this time that we re-release the bond. Happy to answer any questions.
Hearing none, is there a motion? So moved?
Second.
Motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Go ahead.
Trusty Mearsack?
Yes.
Trusty Brusaska?
Yes.
Trusty Guyer?
Yes.
Trusty Spurley?
Yes.
Trusty Bowman?
Yes.
Trusty Youngerman?
I carry six to zero, thank you. All right, item B is Resolution 2024-022, authorizing the acceptance of public improvements and bond reduction for Freddie's Steak Burgers. Go ahead.
This is a reduction in bond, recognizing the work that has been done. We are maintaining funds for landscaping and for the maintenance period. So this is a reduction, but we are still holding funds to make sure.
So moved?
Second.
Trusty Youngerman?
Yes.
Trusty Mearsack?
Yes.
Trusty Brusaska?
Yes.
Trusty Guyer?
Yes.
Trusty Spurley?
Yes.
Trusty Bowman?
Yes.
I carry six zero. Item C is Resolution 2024-023, authorizing a low-interest loan, Montgomery Development Fund, hmm, that's worded funny, to Trevita Collaborative Kitchen Company.
Thank you. This is the end that came to you previously. It's coming back, just there's been a change in the loan amount. And so with that, I thought we should bring it back to you and happy to answer any questions you have.
Is the, the reason for the reduction, I understand the reason for the reduction, is that a required reduction and is the company okay with that moving forward with that amount? Or is it something that would require a little bit more conversation and possible alternative methods or anything else that we can do to get to the needed or initially requested dollar amount?
I mean, we did the, Jeff is here, if you'd like to speak to that.
Thank you, yeah, that's a good question. We reduced the loan amount because we had some equity that was taken up by a different loan from a engineering company. And we didn't realize that that was not going to be covered on this, so. But we're extremely grateful for the, for the money. It's gonna help us fill out the space. The kitchen is going really well. We've got a lot of clients and all our dedicated spaces are gonna be filled, so we're excited about that and again, so appreciated.
Thanks Jeff.
All right. Any further questions? Motion to approve?
Second.
Trusty Mearsack?
Yes.
Trusty Brusaska?
Yes.
Trusty Guyer?
Yes.
Trusty Spurley?
Yes.
Trusty Bowman?
Yes.
Trusty Youngerman?
Yes.
I carry six zero. Thanks, sir. All right, item D today is Ordinance 2082, approving the assignment of TIF funds in an escrow agreement buying among the Village of Montgomery, 325 South Route 31 LLC, MB Montgomery LLC, and the Amalgamated Bank of Illinois. This is waiver of first passage on second. Go ahead Jeff.
Thank you. Said this relates to the TIF at the grid. The owners who we have the redevelopment agreement with have asked if they can assign their TIF funds to a third party, which is allowed in the agreement. Our, our TIF attorney has looked at it and worked on this agreement, so it's not changing the amount that will be paid out from the TIF. That amount stays the same, it's just who the funds will be going to, so. That, I'm happy to answer any questions.
So I do have one question. So this is going into an escrow. So the way that the TIFs work now, somebody submits for reimbursement through a TIF, are they still going to have to do that or are they just going to have access to the escrow? Because the way I read this is they just make a request?
No, they, receipts still have to be submitted.
And approved by the village?
Yes.
Perfect, okay.
It's still related to that list of items that was original?
Yes. Yep, yeah, we have receipts now that we are observing, so everything will still have to be sent and approved by the village.
Okay, perfect. Motion to approve?
Second.
So a motion and second by Spurley?
Motion by?
Motion Guyer, second Youngerman.
Trusty Guyer?
Yes.
Trusty Spurley?
Yes.
Trusty Bowman?
Yes.
Trusty Youngerman?
Yes.
Trusty Mearsack?
Yes.
Trusty Brusaska?
Yes.
I carry six zero, thank you. All right, item E is Resolution 2024-021, accepting a pedestrian sidewalk easement. This is American Mobile Home Communities 2 LLC, and the parcel number is listed. Director Wolf?
Thank you, President Rowley. So the Village of Montgomery did identify in our sidewalk gap program, an area of sidewalk to install along Douglas Road, which required a easement from the Oak Grove Mobile Home Park. The village was able to obtain this easement at no cost. And if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
Thanks. Motion to approve?
Second.
Trusty Guyer?
Yes.
Trusty Spurley?
Yes.
Trusty Bowman?
Yes.
Trusty Youngerman?
Yes.
Trusty Mearsack?
Yes.
Trusty Brusaska?
Yes.
I carries, thank you. The last item for separate action is Ordinance 2081, amending Section 11-85 of the Village Code of Ordinances for Motor Vehicles and Safety Selection and Designation of Towing Services Application. This is waiver of first passage on second. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. President. What you have before you is a ordinance text amendment, 1185, adding background checks to the application packet on our towing services. Paragraph H, I believe, outlined in red.
I'm sorry, is that just for towing services that the village uses or is that for anyone coming in to the village?
No, that is our police tow services. When the police department requests a tow to come take a vehicle, since they're doing it on our behalf, we feel there should be a background check on that service.
This is not a result of an issue we had?
I'm sorry?
This is not a result of an issue we had with the tow truck company or just?
Nope.
Putting this in place?
We, we did have some people apply to be on that list. We looked at the ordinance we had and the application we had. We forwarded Ms. Julian, she looked at it, this is a recommendation.
Perfect.
The, the background check, would it be related to the owner of the towing service or to the individual actually doing the towing?
I believe the towing and some of his drivers, they still have to provide a list of drivers for us.
Okay, thank you.
And there's multiple towing services, correct? Yes, I believe right now we have six on our list.
Thanks, chief. So moved?
Second.
Trusty Mearsack?
Yes.
Trusty Brusaska?
Yes.
Trusty Guyer?
Yes.
Trusty Spurley?
Yes.
Trusty Bowman?
Yes.
Trusty Youngerman?
Yes.
I carry six zero, thank you. All right, the last one is item for discussion. It's a continued discussion on the liquor license request for a new restaurant slash bar, Levin Entertainment at 1575 Douglas Road.
I believe the petitioner is here to answer questions that the board posed last time.
Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. I'm gonna make this very brief unless you have questions for me. My name is Erin Gallagher. I was here in February. And at your request, we provided more material for you, more detailed drawings of the space with a total of 40 seats for the seating. We provided an updated menu and we provided lots of photos of the, some of the food dishes that, that we've tried. I just want to say that the property that we are looking at currently has nine spaces, of which three are empty. The landlord and, and broker have written a letter letting you know what that economic impact has been for them. We were here in February and nothing has changed in the last four months for them. I'd like to also remind you that we have two gentlemen who are upstanding citizens, who are very good businessmen. They come recommended from the mayors and the police chiefs of their communities that they have been operating in. We went over that a few months ago. We've had no problems with any kind of crime or security or police action at all. We believe this is a great business opportunity. We believe it's for adults, so would be a 21 and over restaurant. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Where we stand at this point is, with your blessing, we would like to file an application for the liquor license this week.
Excellent, thank you. Questions?
I, I have a question, actually not for Ms. Gallagher, but because they are proposing doing tastings, sorry Jeff, I'm looking at you. Because they're proposing doing tastings, I'm wondering, how does this compare to Cooper's Hawk? We just had Cooper's Hawk open. Okay, maybe to Attorney Julian instead.
Sure, it's a similar concept as what Cooper's Hawk has. Cooper's Hawk recreated a new liquor license that had the pour element, the sales element, and then the tastings element built into one license. However, they don't fit the definition of the Cooper's Hawk license because theirs was specifically targeted to wine. And I understand this is a whiskey product that's primarily, when it's gonna be sold, I believe.
Wine and whiskey both, yeah, right. I mean, it's going to have liquor. The whiskey tends to be the most popular, but there will be other liquor served along with wine.
Yeah, but for the retail sales, I understand it was a lot of top shelf whiskey was what was in the packet?
That would be poured.
That would be poured?
Yes. The, the top shelf whiskeys would be poured.
Okay, and what was the?
Not necessarily a package.
Okay, what was the package intent?
We've had, in other locations, we've had wine bottle sales for package, but that wasn't going to be our primary goal in this particular location.
Okay, so I don't think it exactly lined up. When I looked previously, it was close, it didn't exactly line up. I'd have to go back and look at the exact language again, because based on how I read it in the packet, I read it a little bit differently. But it would either be something, either new liquor license, if it doesn't fit in Cooper's Hawks, which both Director Act and I didn't believe it did initially, it would either be a new license that has all the elements built in, similar to Cooper's Hawk, or it would be kind of a piecemeal of the existing licenses. Either the G, which is the restaurant license, which then has that 50/50, or a tavern license, depending on what the board wanted. And then if there was a retail element, it would be a Class C. And then the tastings currently in the Village Code are, they're very specific type tastings, which wasn't what Cooper's Hawk was doing. So either if, depending on if it was a forced, like a for sale or, you know, just a tasting, sampling, more or less, would depend on whether or not they'd fit into our tasting license or if they'd have to have a new one created for the tasting element.
So they would need multiple licenses?
Right now, it sounds like three separate based off of what they're proposing, unless you did a single all encompassing license similar to Cooper's Hawk.
I see, okay, thank you.
What unit are you looking at?
I don't, 1575 is what the address is.
Got it.
But I don't know if it has a ABC unit number on it. 1575, yeah. It's one of the larger ones in the strip mall.
Yep, okay. And the drawing that we have is of that unit or is this just representative of what it could look like?
I'm not sure if it's exactly drawn to scale, but it was designed to be the drawing for that particular unit.
Got it, okay.
Yes. So if you see that there were 24, 24 seats at the four top tables, 10 seats at the high top rounds, and then six at the bar.
Got it. Okay, questions? Comments? Teresa?
So again, I'm just, I'm trying to grasp. I'm trying to grasp, and I know you just covered this, how this compares to what we just did with Cooper's Hawk. So bear with me.
Sure.
Laura, so again, at Cooper's Hawk, they will allow someone to come in with an underage child or something to go and have their meal. But then, the underage person can't be up at that bar where they're doing the tastings, is that correct? Okay, so that, that's a difference than what you all are, what your vision is.
And I think that's relative to the size as well. Cooper's Hawk is a much larger facility and can accommodate that.
It is, yeah, it is quite large. And then the tastings, you said it would be the whiskey and the wine. Are you anticipating them to be complimentary? Are you doing flights that they're paying for?
Right, so tastings are typically scheduled events that would happen like, like a Tuesday, Tuesday evening or something like that, and it would be for purchase.
Who's the owner of the, the building? You said that there was a letter from the owner in here?
There was a, there was a letter in the, in the February packet that was from the, the broker and the owner.
I have the broker on here, but I don't have the owner. Okay. So I appreciate you coming, I'll, I'll go first. I'm not gonna be in, in favor of this, I just don't think that it, I, I really like the facility, I really like the, the tenants that are in there, I love the, the atmosphere that it's creating. I don't know that this use here as a gaming parlor is really kind of improving the access and the quality of life in that, in that area. And that's probably exactly what I was thinking that Teresa was gonna say. So I will, I will not be in support of it, but that doesn't mean that the rest of the board?
If I, if I may speak to that, we were told that this would be much more desirable if it were in a different location than on the Douglas Road area. And we have looked extensively for, for different units and there were no properties available. And so in order for us to, to do this, there was, there was no other place to go within the community.
Yeah, I totally get it. We've been very, tried to be very responsible with this type of use because of the backlash that we've received, or at least I've received, from residents that don't believe that it really enhances our community. I know we've had some neighboring communities that have approved lots of these, but in the years that we've been here, I think maybe one straight-up gaming parlor we've approved, and that was at, in front of the Menards.
And that's not what we're proposing. And we're proposing a restaurant in a, in an area with three open units out of nine.
I hear you.
I think for me, the, I'm sorry, I feel like that's not a, you know, I really was studying this and, and trying to figure out a way to support it because I, I appreciate what you all came back with and made all those changes. The sticking point for me is that it's a 21 and over, which to me reads tavern.
Yeah.
And we've been very diligent about not allowing tavern licenses in here. And I get that's your business model, you know, it's like, I so want to support this.
Right, right.
Because, you know, because I, I can see that, but yeah, I, I feel like I've been really protective over Douglas Road because there are so many liquor licenses there and there's, it's, it's just oversaturated, in my opinion, in my opinion.
Sure.
That's the sticking point for me, is that this is going to read tavern, you know, because nobody under 21 can come in.
Right, right.
Yeah. So I'm, at this point, I can't support it.
Okay.
Gentlemen? Yeah, I can go. Yeah, when you first brought it before the board, I was not excited about it because it was definitely a bar. You had bar food, it was a bar menu. Everything was bar, 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 just a tavern. I appreciate you, you've come back with a more extensive menu. The liquor license is more than 50% food. I, I understand, even though I've got lots of grandkids and great-grandkids and stuff, I, I can understand and appreciate the need for someplace where people can go without kids. I always made the joke that you used to be able to smoke in a restaurant, you would go in a restaurant, they would say smoking or non-smoking. I always said, why didn't they change that to kids or no kids? Because sometimes you just wanna go to a restaurant and just not have kids around. And I, I think of Bristol Tap, and it's, that is a bar, but again, they serve a lot of food there and that's one of the reasons I, I like to go down there every now and again. It's just, it's just a nice place just to go with no kids around and the screaming and yelling. I, I'm more open to this as it's presented now than I was when you first presented it.
Sure.
The, and I, I guess the 21 and older doesn't really bother me because I understand what you're trying to do, you're trying to make it a place where adults can go.
It's a highly desirable piece of this business model, actually, yeah.
And I get that. I also agree that we're very cautious about Douglas Road, that we've had a lot of people that we've denied. But I think this is somewhat in line with what we asked them to do back in February. We asked them to bring something back to us that was more of a restaurant element and not just a, a bar or tavern. Because I'm 100% against just a bar or tavern where the sole purpose is to go in and get drunk, basically. And, and this has an extensive food component to it, it's, it's no longer, in my mind, a bar or a tavern. So, you know, having said that, I, I wouldn't be opposed to going forward with it. We would have to figure out this, this licensing and make sure that, you know, that we really dial that in so that we fully understand. Because it does say in the letter here that retail wine and whiskey-related items, along with retail sales of wine. So you're just gonna retail sell wine, you're not gonna resell whiskey? When it says wine and whiskey-related items, you know, I'm, I'm thinking of, you know, wine corks, you know, tanners, you know, things like that, flasks or something.
Right, right.
So I guess we would, I, I would need a little bit more specific information as far So I guess we would, I, I would need a little bit more specific information, as far as what the antenna is for the, for people to buy and, and carry out. But I'm not fully opposed to this, to this concept.
What is the percent makeup that would be required for food as related to alcohol right now?
With the Class G license, food has to be 50%.
Gaming and liquor is the rest. So food has to be more than 50%.
And, and that, that's the, you're going for Class G license, or a hybrid of-
That was the discussion. We've had, we've had some clarification on the different licenses, but G was the one that we were targeting, yes, because we were looking at a food menu designed to bring in more than 50 or 51%. And that's a pretty high bar-
It is.
-with gaming and alcohol.
Right.
So the alcohol would not be able to contribute to that, which is different than some other communities, where alcohol is part of that 50%. So it's a much higher standard here.
Which gets back to, we don't want bars.
Yeah.
That's basically why that is such a high standard.
What is a, what is the cost of a whiskey pour? Or let me, let me ask you, what is the least expensive whiskey pour?
It's not, it, it's not, the, the whiskies that we have vary from, and I just put together a whiskey menu, actually. They vary from very high-end, like the Johnny Walker Blue, and then we also have some of the specialties like Eagle Rare and, and Buffalo Trace, and they all vary in price. None of them are cheap, so if the question is, are you going to be selling your whiskies for cheap, the answer is no. We're not going to be selling them for below market, just to get people in there, because that's not our goal. Our goal is to sell the food, right? But to answer your question specifically, is it $5, $6, $7 a pour? I, I don't know exactly what the ring will be. Does that answer your question?
It's the food piece, but more importantly, and I'll be the one to say it, is that we don't want to see people walking in and out with a brown bag of the least expensive whiskey you have, or the cheapest bottle of wine you have, and, you know, just walking down the street with it. So it's the accessibility-
Oh, no, oh, no, no, no.
It's who the, the target clientele is going to be. Do you have demographics as kind of like the median income that frequents your other establishments?
Well-
What the average purchase price is at the other establishment? I think it's a great-
You've got a lot to-
I think it's a great concept.
Yeah.
You know, the, the thought of, you know, some of it I expressed earlier, and I'm glad to see the menu has expanded, but it was like, oh yeah, you know, I'm going to go in for, you know, a wine tasting, have mozzarella sticks, it just doesn't-
No.
That doesn't match up, but, so it's that target group that you're, you're after.
You have said a lot, there's a lot of your comment that, that can be unpacked, because you're asking about demographics, you're asking about people walking down the street with a brown bag, you're asking about a number of things. And my short answer, quite simply, is this. We have a history of having zero problems with the police and security in all of our communities. Zero. Not one, not a little bit.
Not stating that it's your individual businesses or the individual entities themselves, but you have to take in it, I don't know what the, the regional demographics are around the existing businesses, what that three mile or, or one and a half mile radius around your existing concepts-
Sure.
-look like. It could be, you could have it in a strip mall just outside of a residential area of $375,000 homes. I don't know that. That's not the demographic of that area, that street. That's my concern.
So when we did, to respond to the democrat, demographic piece of this, we did a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, and we carefully looked at the demographics, not just in that particular street, or that particular area, but in the Village of Montgomery. And what we found is, when we have people who are interested in the higher level wines and whiskies, it creates its own interest, and the people who come are people who can appreciate that. And so, it's the, yes, we want to put it in a community, but it's also, in, in a community where we've researched it, but also there's a little bit of if you build it, they will come, piece of this. And I think the fact that we are creating something that's more upscale, that is a little higher brow, and has a little bit more depth to what they're offering, I think that is probably the best way to answer and address your concerns, because those are our concerns too. We don't want to open a business that would have problems. We don't want you coming knocking on our door and saying, hey, we're pulling your liquor license because you don't meet these criteria, or whatever. So we are very dedicated to making sure that what we're doing fits within your community, and that's why we've taken the time to be here this evening, and not just start with a liquor license application. We want it to be a good fit. If we were to find a different location, other than this one, would that be more desirable for you, if it weren't on Douglas Road?
I mean, the key thing that we're considering here is whether or not we're interested in issuing a liquor license at this location. Not so much that we support you, it's whether or not, right?
It's the address?
It's always been about the place, and less about the individual doing it.
Okay.
So at this location, we can talk, I mean, you can give your opinions on whatever you want, but on this location specifically.
I appreciate, because I was rather direct, related to the gaming-
Yeah.
-at the last meeting, and-
And thank you.
Well, again-
That's why we're here.
What you need to hear. I like the changes. I like, I can picture what this is going to possibly bring with people from surrounding communities, because there's nothing like this. There's nothing where you can go, and again, looking at the prices on the menu, this isn't a, this isn't a restaurant. This is a place you come and have a drink and have some heavy appetizers. Right? Because there's not a lot of meals, there, there, but again-
We're working on that. We, we had some, we had some pretty good fails, where we tried a few things that we wanted for more dinner items, and it just didn't work out, so I, I think there's definitely more to come on that front, for sure. But you're right, I, that was a concern. When I submitted this, I didn't want you to think it was only appetizers.
Well, and again, they're, they're heavy appetizers, charcuterie trays, coming in and having a drink, and it's adult. I appreciate that I have three children, but I also like Bristol Tap, because children aren't allowed there. Because again, sometimes you want to just go someplace with your spouse, or with the neighbors, for a drink and a snack, that's not going to cost you $400. Someplace you could go and, and enjoy-
And you can treat yourself to something special, like one pour or two pours of a nicer whiskey that you don't keep at your house, or a nicer glass of wine that you wouldn't buy for yourself. That's what we're targeting, so thank you.
The only really thing that troubles me is the package, and I get the packaging. I get it, because if you're going to sell wine, but unlike a Cooper's Hock, which has a wine club, and you're a member of that, it's a little bit of a different animal here. And that's the part that I think Trusty Baumann was going towards, and I know Trusty Spurling's concern is, is the packaged liquor, that we don't want, we don't allow people to sell 40s at the gas station over that way, because we don't want people walking around with them.
Right.
Same thing. We don't want somebody to come in and buy a $12 bottle of bourbon, and be walking down the street with it. And that's, that's a concern, and again, I know you, you're saying no, but it's kind of out of our control, once we say yes. We have to have a lot of faith, and I just need to make sure-
I'm going to find a way, I'm going to find a way to help solve that, and I, and I hear that concern, and those are very legitimate concerns. Yeah, I mean, we are, we are equally about safety, but we're not, that's not happening in our other locations, so that's not hitting me in the forehead. I didn't, I didn't come prepared to solve that.
That's okay, and again, that's why we have pretty direct conversations at this board. So again, I like the idea, I like the concept of it, because I think it's different. I don't, I don't envision this being what used to be a tavern.
Okay.
There's just, there aren't many of those left anymore.
No.
For good reason.
Yeah.
I don't anticipate that that's what this would become, but this is someplace you could go with your wife on a Sunday afternoon, have a drink, have some heavy appetizers, and have a nice evening. So-
What is the name that you, that you operate under, and what's the other town? I can't remember.
Vino and-
I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, what are the locations you write?
Zen Club.
Uh, it's not Zen Club, it's, it's Zen, and then we also have Vino, Zen.
Okay.
And then there, there are some gaming bistros, and those are different. That's not what we're proposing here, and there's also a liquor, there are also liquor stores that are not, that have no gaming, so they, we've got different business models.
Got it.
We sell a lot of hooch.
What is the, what does the Vino operate under, under the liquor, sorry, the gaming board? What's the name of the LLC? Because I can, I see the Zen.
Yeah, may I get those to you? I, I don't have that off the top of my head, because that's not my, that's not my area of business, but I'd be happy to get you the exact names of the LLCs in the other locations. But I also want to, I just, I really want to, I'm not trying to tiptoe around this, I'm trying to be accurate. We have someone who has been partner in these other locations, and that person is partnering with a lifelong friend for this location in Montgomery, so it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. So we can say we've got 15 years' experience with liquor stores and, and selling wine and being around in this.
Sure.
But it's not, I, I don't want to say it's the same people exactly, because it's not, so that's why I'm a little hesitant. But I will get you the LLC names, I don't have those.
Is the Zen cafe, is that roughly the same size as this one?
Yes, roughly.
Okay. So I just pulled the last year of their gaming, and they generated, there was wagering of $10 million, so they generated $1 million of gaming revenue for that facility in the last 12 months. So based on that, you need to sell a lot of food in this location, and the game, hold on one second, and the gaming aspect of this takes up more space than all of the seating. So it's a gaming hall that serves food, just so we're clear on that.
I, I don't, I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not in agreement with the numbers, because the difference between somebody putting a $10 bill in a machine-
I get you on that.
And then that keeps, they keep playing it, and they keep playing that same $10, that goes up and down, so the, the amount of money that goes in the machines is not the same amount of money as the revenue generated.
Sure. So the terminal income was, was $1 million at that facility. $11 million wagered. Terminal income over the last 12 months was $1 million. So that would bring some tax to town, but it's a lot of wagering. And we've, we've worked so hard over the last 10 years to ensure that we, that we met the goals of our community, and all the folks that we talked to, about not having video gaming facilities. We have a town next to us that approved so many of these, and I get comments from people all the time, including folks that live there, that say, I can't believe they did that. They converted the breakfast place we went to on Orchard Road into a liquor, liquor store with a gaming hall attached to it. So I'm going to, I made my piece on it, I just wanted to make sure everybody was clear on that.
I think that the big key, it's just like if you, if we're a drinker, right? Drinking is not bad if it's in moderation. Drinking overboard, you're constantly drunk, that's a bad thing. That's bad lifestyle, that's bad health. I think as, also, we need to be conscious of, is that as the state, you know, passes budgets, and when there's tax, tax cuts that are made, that reduces, you know, the tax coming into our village, and we need to recoup that in our own tax, in our own ways. How can we do that, how can we make that up responsibly, without additional taxes to, to our residents? I think this board has done a tremendous job compared to neighboring communities, as regards to the number of, of gaming establishments in the area. Done responsibly, I don't think it's a bad thing. Do we want one in every other building along the street? No, absolutely not. But I think with the need to have some additional revenue from, from gaming, we need to look at our long-term sustainability in the village. And, you know, this board, even prior to me being here, has really prided itself and has gone to great strains to, to hold a tax levy, and you should be very proud of that. But that's only going to be able to go on for so long, before the cost of pensions and benefits and salaries catch up to that. Something's going to have to be done. So how can we bring in additional revenue without increasing that tax levy? And his having one or two establishments that have gaming in the village, the worst way to do that. I think what I'm hearing in the questions that I'm, the answers that I'm getting, is that the type of clientele, the type of product that's being sold, I don't have concern about the type of clientele that they're going to bring into the business. I guess that leads to a question of, however, who is able to walk in and game without purchasing, or is there a minimum purchase requirement in order to then have access to the gaming area?
Access to the gaming area would be available to anyone 21 and over who would come into the, to the, into the, into the restaurant. The breakdown in the payouts of the revenues are 32.5% go to the location, 32.5% go to the operator, 35% goes to the state, of which 5% goes to the municipality. So, and then any terminal fees that the municipality decides to assign per terminal. I also want to state that Zen has grown quite a bit. That business has grown up quite a bit over time, and was very, very slow the first several years. So when we're talking about the revenues for food versus the number of dollars of the gaming, you, you can't compare a million dollars' worth of gaming revenues to how much food they're going to take, because that's also not apples-to-apples. The amount of money that the, the location gets is less than a third of that, minus expenses, but the food would have to be comparable to, to the restaurant's portion of that. So I just, I just want to make sure that we're all kind of looking at these numbers in actuality. The number of seats in this table, in this restaurant, there are 40 seats in this restaurant, and when you take a look at the two neighboring restaurants in that facility, in that same strip mall, they don't have anywhere near the tables that we're looking to have. So we are potentially the largest restaurant in that area, I mean, in that strip mall. So I, I just, I recognize and I respect that if, if this is not what you want for that area, that's, I'm not here to convince you that you should. But if there is, if there is another opportunity that arises, where we can move this to another location, that would be more palatable, we would like the opportunity to do that, but there's just been no, there's been no availability. There's been no, no places available. We've been looking, we've been working with Sonya for a number, for a number of years now, trying to find something. So this is not a small, this has not been a small effort. We are committed to working within the parameters of the Village of, of Montgomery.
Let, let me address a couple of things. I've been kind of sitting and listening, and kind of developing opinions and questions and things. I guess my first comment is if they want to sell packaged liquor, or a bottle of wine, or something like that, it's just as easy for me to walk into Benny's and get a bottle of wine, and walk outside with a bottle of wine, as it is this facility, right? So-
Or Home Pantry across the street.
Yeah, or, or Home Pantry, right? Some, one of the questions I've been asking myself is, okay, I live over on the west side, if this was located on the west side, would we be approving it? Probably, right? Most likely. I appreciate the fact that you've come back, and you've, you've changed the menu, you've changed the layout and things. It, it is less of a gaming parlor in my eyes, and I'm cognizant of what Trusty Spurling is saying on, on Douglas Road. I can go either way with this. I agree with, with Trusty Baumann as far as the tax. At, at some point, you know, with the state and the, the things that they're talking about doing, and, and taking tax dollars away, at some point, we need to be, to begin to recoup that. The other thing, I, I have a seven-year-old, and my wife and my daughter were up here, and they left a little bit ago. Two weeks ago, we were Morgan-free. She was at Grandma and Grandpa's, and we actually got to go to Cooper's Hock and have a normal dinner, just my wife and I. I think the first one in like seven years, right? Where we got to have dinner and a glass of wine, or whatever, and it, it was nice, right? And yeah, Cooper's Hock had kids that were in there, and it was busy, or whatever, but it was nice just to be able to sit down and have an adult conversation, without Morgan saying, hey, I want to be on my Kindle, or I want this, or I want that, or I want mac and cheese, can you get me this and that? So I can go either way with this. I'm going to continue to sit here and be quiet, and listen to, to more conversation and questions, before I, I determine my ultimate vote, but right now, I could go either way with this.
So I'll say, I'm probably the most open-minded here. I, I really like the concept, like Trusty Mirisak said. I do, I do like whiskey tastings. I've been a few in the area myself. However, I don't really like it in this location.
Okay. Totally reasonable. Sure, sure.
What are your intended hours of operation?
Breakfast, lunch, and dinner, until close, whatever the, whatever the Villa- Breakfast, lunch and dinner until close, whatever the, whatever the village ordinances allow.
So whatever the liquor license allows? So you'll, you'll open at what time in the morning then?
I don't have a specific time set, right? They haven't told me a specific time set. But typically we have, you know, if we're gonna have the kitchen, we're gonna have breakfast sandwiches and that was part of the menu.
So what's the ordinance say about serving liquor? What, what time?
I thought it was nine or 10.
Yeah, I don't know.
We would comply with whatever the village.
I think it's a little bit later on Sunday mornings, but yeah.
You can sell anytime except between 1:00 AM and 6:00 AM.
We would not be open at 6:00 AM. I can tell you that.
And then it's slightly different for Sun, you know, Sa, Sunday night.
Okay. The other piece I'd like to just comment on, packaged liquor has not been a, um, a, a strong part of our business. And it's not, it is not something we would hang our hats on, but we've done it because we've had customers who, um, guests who wanted to take a bottle of wine home. And like a gentleman would come in and he would have a glass of, of whiskey and then take a bottle of wine home to his wife. So that was kind of what spurred that. But if it is a, um, if that is a, a large concern of yours, I've heard, I think, three of you mention that you are concerned about package. That's not, uh, something that we would, uh, need to hang on to. We would be happy to comply with your wishes on that.
So this one be that you come in, have a glass of wine and then say, I wanna take the rest of the bottle home with me? Can I just buy it by the bottle or?
There are, um, having done this for other clients and other, in other places, there are ways of doing that where the state allows for transport. You would reseal it, there are bags and things like that. That's not what we're into. We're not interested in, in that. It just, I think it, I think it opens up, um, a lot more responsibility for the employees and the staff. And we don't want to subject them to, if they didn't do it exactly correctly, da-da-da-da-da. So, um, no, that would not be our, our speed.
And I get, I get the intended, um, audience. You know, as I'm, I'm looking, you know, you talk about the Johnny Walker and the concept. I can, I can get even at Juul, it's $250 a bottle. So, you know, you're not gonna walk away probably with.
Right.
Two bottles out of this place. And that's the whole point of going in for just a, a pour.
Mm-hmm.
Or two of some high-end stuff. I, you know, I, I guess, you know, the concern is, is that this, is that the star? Is that the one highlight of, of the, the higher-end product? Or again, you, you've been to, to tastings. I'm not a, I'm not a bourbon guy, a whiskey guy. My palate isn't that, that refined. I can have an $11 bottle of wine or I can have an $80 bottle of wine. It's just, it's all gonna, I'd rather have the food. But what, what's your, you said you've been to some tastings.
Yeah, so, so normally with a tasting, it's you're, you're just sampling different wines that they're trying to push or different whiskeys they're trying to push. And there's always a pairing with them. So you're eating as well as drinking.
Right, right.
And I think it's like a, it's normally like a fee. Like it's $65 and you go and you get, you know, six or seven samplings along with some paired foods and things. And again, to Ben's point, is it's generally sponsored by someone, you know? Jack Daniels is sponsoring it and they're bringing in their higher-end bourbons because they have a whole line of them. And they bring in those to have you tasting those because they're trying to open everyone up to a new product that they're, that they're marketing, so.
Is there any worry or concern about, and I, I guess I would think of, of this as a business owner, you have some high-end whiskeys that, that's being sampled. And the pours, I mean, relative to the cost of that bottle, have to be a decent price for the pour. Yet the gaming element is gonna allow anybody who wants to walk in and game. Is there any worry or concern that you have some of the people in the gaming area that people willing to pay that price for whiskey really aren't gonna wanna be around?
We've not had any. I, I think, I think with all.
Relative to the kids, like walking with the kids. I mean, it's all.
With all businesses, there are always concerns about, um, customers that may not be your target. And that's a polite way of saying if you don't want certain people that, you know, for whatever reason, um, they smell. I don't know. There, there are people that you don't want in your business. There's, there's always gonna be that element, that concern. But by and large, having done this for a number of years and having different locations, we've never really had any, any problems. We put together a clean business. It's beautiful, it's, it's well-lit, it's safe. Women feel comfortable. I feel comfortable going in there and that's saying something. And, and we just don't, we just haven't had any, had any problems. We work directly with the communities, we work directly with the police should we need to, and we've never had any problems. It's not to say that it'll never happen, but it's just to say that we want a tight ship.
And, and with part of my point too, with being protective over Douglas Road. I mean, there's so many different areas, uh, gaming areas that anybody could just walk into. You know, I mean, there's, there's just so many opportunities on Douglas Road. That you can walk in and sit there and play games all day, play slots, whatever. I, I don't know, I've, I've never done it, but.
But the Village of Montgomery didn't decide.
No.
The, the gaming, that was the state.
State, right.
Right. We just said yea or nay on the liquor licenses and that's why.
Right.
Usually a no on that.
If, if there's a, a 50% component for food and they don't hit that 50%, what happens?
Typically, there's a warning letter that's sent out and they're given a certain amount of time for compliance. And then if they don't comply within the timeframe set, you know, it's up to the board. But ultimately, the Liquor Commissioner, the Board has the option then to rescind the license.
You are not powerless here, is my understanding. And it sounds like that's what she's saying as well. So if, if we, uh, if we put together a proposal and you all agree to it now and it's not, it doesn't, you know, we don't do what we promised we're gonna do, you have the authority to, to make change.
I think our, I mean, my biggest concern with that is nobody wants to rely on that to let you make an investment in our community.
Neither do we.
Right. And then come.
There's a chunk of money going into this, right?
January of '25 or '26, we send you a letter that says, I'm sorry, it didn't, you know, didn't work out. You can no longer operate here. Or you just don't have a liquor license and then you don't have the gaming. And you continue to have a restaurant.
If, if that 50% threshold is not met, or whatever it's decided, because it sounds like we're creating, we're somewhat creating a liquor license. Well, no, she, you said G, so, okay, if that, if that 50% is not met and a letter goes out and that threshold is still not met, is it ultimately the decision of the Liquor Commissioner or the Village Board?
Double check. I thought it was the Commissioner. And I wasn't entirely sure if it makes the recommendation of the Board or if it's entirely at the Commissioner. But it's, the Commissioner is the Village President, so.
Okay.
One way or the other, it's somebody.
Let's assume it's the Board.
I can double check that.
In other, in other, I don't know what the rules are, what the laws are here and I'm not going to presume. But I can tell you that in other communities, um, the Liquor Commissioner has pretty wide authority. And can bring down the thunder should you need to.
I'm not, I'm not supportive now, so I don't wanna put myself in that position later.
But, but respectfully, I mean, this is not without, this is not without recourse. And I've heard that from a number of you. Once we approve it, then we don't have any choice. That's not, I don't, I don't believe that's entirely accurate.
It's a politically unpopular choice to make later to say, business, you can't operate here.
Right, right.
Because of a rule that we set.
To, just to be clear, cause I think you touched on this. The 50% is 50% of their take.
Yeah.
So.
Which is less than the million, yeah.
Well, if it's a million, 32.5%, it's like 325,000.
Sure.
Divide that out by, you know, a $20 tab.
But that's just the gaming, so the liquor gets added to that.
Oh, the liquor gets added to that, correct. I suggest that you make that bourbon really expensive.
Yeah. Lots and lots of tastings.
Give it a liquor.
There's no question, this is a very, very high bar and it's a higher bar than most communities that you've set. And we are aware of that.
By design. And by design.
Yes, yes, yes.
And it's not just our plan that we concocted. It's all the feedback we've gotten from residents over 15 years.
Completely understandable. And I'm not trying to change the rules, I'm trying to comply with them.
Yeah, I get you.
I won't keep you anymore unless anybody has any specific questions. But what I, I would like to, if I may please, keep the door open. If we find another location, we can modify with the package component and, and perhaps find something that's a little more amiable for all of you.
I do have one more question.
Yes.
What's the name of the restaurant?
I was hoping you wouldn't ask. I almost got out of here because we've been fighting over that. At the moment, uh, the name that we're looking at is Sparrow, Sparrows. But that's not the final answer. And I don't get a vote, so I'm not in, I'm not involved in that decision, um, but, uh, but that's, yeah.
The reason I ask is, there, there's a lot in the name too. You can tell by the, the name of a restaurant, of the type of, you know, Bob's Restaurant.
Yeah.
You pretty much know what you're getting, right?
Right.
Right.
Alice's Restaurant, yes, okay.
So that's, that's the reason I ask.
Thank you also very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good night.
All right, anything new or unfinished?
Sparrow in German. That's why I was like, oh.
I'll be there.
Up to the microphone, please, sir.
I'm sorry. Uh, Beautification Committee has a floral judging on Wednesday at 5:30 at Public Works. If anybody's willing to assist.
Thank you.
I will be there.
Let, let me see if, uh.
I cannot be there.
Let me see what's going on.
Okay. And HPC has their walking tour on the 22nd, 10 AM. I will be there.
All right, anybody else? All right, future meetings, uh, Intergov is in, uh, two weeks, June 24th at 6:00 PM. Then the Village Board meeting at 7:00. No executive session, entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Go ahead.
Trusty Youngerman?
Yes.
Trusty Mirzak?
Yes.
Trusty Brzezaska?
Yes.
Trusty Guyer?
Affirmative.
Trusty Spurley?
Yes.
Trusty Battlemann?
Yes.[1796.29]